Okay, let me know when he pops in. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the January 4th Select Board meeting. As Chair of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, we're going to give Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04. This public body is authorized to meet elections. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to temporarily to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Orders. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access by telephone, additional access possibilities, video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. The public has access to contemporaneous listening and, if necessary, participation. Your participation can take place by dialing 1-603-664-0240 and entering conference code 676749973. Your participation can take place by typing in D I P dot L Y backslash capital B A R R capital S capital T. Providing public notice of necessary information for accessing the meeting. You've previously given notice to the public of necessary information for accessing the meeting. How to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams by phone or video. Instructions of all participants are provided on the website of the Town of Barrington at W W W dot Barrington dot N H dot gov. If the public alert us during the meeting that problems have arisen with access, we would be rescheduling the meeting, adjourning and rescheduling the meeting. If you should have a problem throughout the meeting, please dial 664-0240. Let's deal with the information at Barrington dot N H dot gov. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting should be done by roll call vote. Start the meeting beginning with a roll call attendance. Member please speak whether you are home with someone. This is required of right. We have Dan?
Yes.
Select person there, you want to start roll call attendance?
Oh, I thought we did. Maybe that's Mr. Man Trek. I did text Dan. I'll let you know if I hear back from him. It doesn't look like we haven't yet then.
Person Bailey?
George Bailey, 19 Chesley Drive. I'm home here in my office. I'm in my office alone. My wife is downstairs, excuse me, and there's nobody here that's going to influence my vote.
Daniel, are you hearing me now?
Yes, thank you, Dan.
3:34. All conkers turn by because no one here knows my vote. Thank you.
Andrew Knapp, 96 Lindsey Point Road. And I am in the office. My wife and son are out in the regular part of the house and the dog.
Jim Secocia, 21 James Henry Drive, home with my dogs. Nobody's here to influence my vote.
Tracy Partikoff, 48 Stone Farm Road, Barrington, New Hampshire. I am home with approximately five family members, other room and one large dog. No one will be influencing my vote. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, indivisible.
Thank you all. Very big agenda for tonight. Start with the, actually, starting with the public hearing on the proposed operating budget of 7.267566 million dollars. We've all been provided a proposed budget summary. And I think in reference to the public hearing, Connor, let me allow you to run with this and then if there's a portion where we will be open to the public, please let me know.
Yes, absolutely. And I will just note, Tracy, I don't know if it's the hair in front of the earbuds where the microphone is, but you do cut in and out a little bit. I think folks can hear what you're saying, but it's kind of quiet. So if the problem continues, we might have to try a different microphone for it.
Sure.
Okay, great. So how I envision this working for the board and the community, I have a brief presentation that I'll go through. The entire presentation linked to my report, so anybody looking for a more in-depth review can find that online. The Select Board has it in their printed packets. I'll go through the brief presentation. I think we can hear from any questions from the public at that point as the public hearing portion. And then I would ask that the Select Board consider going through the articles as presented in my report and on the agenda, wagering a recommendation vote for each article, which will be recorded and included with the articles going into deliberative session. And certainly we can have any other conversations that we need to at that time. So if that sounds good, I'll go ahead and get started with the presentation. First, very special thank you to staff, department heads, the Budget Committee and the Select Board for this budget process. I think it's gone incredibly smooth and a lot of that is due to the effort of all those folks I mentioned, especially considering that we've been meeting in a new venue virtually like this. So it wouldn't have gone as well as it did without all of that hard work. I think we're in a really good spot, in my opinion, with the budget, with our estimated revenue. It can be very difficult to balance the needs of the community with a tax impact that we put on voters here in town. And I feel like that has been at the forefront of decision-making for the Select Board, but also department heads balancing what their departments need to provide services, but knowing that they need to tighten their belts in order to do right by the taxpayers. So all of those have stressed throughout the entire budget process. Every document of the entire budget process is available on the Town's website, Barrington dot N H dot gov forward slash 2021 budget. And I think that's really important for a number of reasons, but most importantly, for transparency for the community. I hear a lot from folks that say, hey, I can't participate in every meeting of the entire budget process. How can I know what's going on? That website is very well organized, you know, by section. There's a detailed table of contents to take you to any document you might need or want to find additional information on. Additionally, this year, in this presentation, at the bottom of each slide, I've included a link directly to the section of the Budget Binder, which has more information. So again, I'm going to keep the presentation brief, but if anybody's looking for additional information on any topic discussed here, there's a link right in the presentation can take them to where they can find more information on their own. And obviously, they can always contact me at the Town Hall. So again, we talk about providing these services. That's why we're all here. That's the role of government in a community like Barrington. And the funding source for those services comes from a few sources. Property tax, vehicle registration, fees for service, state and federal aid, miscellaneous revenue. And so to show, you know, how that breaks out, I typically say about 50% of our revenue comes from property tax. You can see it's 53% that comes directly from property tax. 27% of the revenue to provide our services comes from vehicle registration. 5% is fees for service, typically the transfer station, building permits, et cetera. The state and federal aid represents 8%. That's really mostly state aid, but some of the funds do come down from the federal government. And then miscellaneous revenue represents 7%. This year, we've talked a tremendous amount about revenue and the impacts of the coronavirus on revenue, which haven't been tremendous. You know, I've highlighted that the state aid is what we expect to see reduced the most, maybe 15%. And so you can find more information in the Budget Binder section, Chapter 5, under Revenue, if you're interested in the details about that. So that 53% chunk, that's obviously the biggest one we hear about, the biggest one we talk about when we talk about the property tax rate. So in 2020, the tax rate was 2277, up 10 cents from last year. You can see that there are small increases in education and county portions and the municipal portion stayed level again. Shown here, the municipal portion still represents 16% of the total tax rate. Education, 73%, and the county, 11%. So that portion of the tax rate, I think, is important. And I really like the way this graph represents how the municipal government, a combination of leadership, the Select Board, town, previous town administrators, department heads, have been able to continually do more. And sometimes doing more just means meeting the increased demand of additional residents and for less. And sometimes that's for less actual dollars, but sometimes that means providing additional services for the same amount that fewer services were provided. And so what this shows is eight years ago, the municipal portion of the tax rate, the total tax rate represented 21%. And here in 2020, it's 16%. And again, if that 21% stayed level, our tax rate would be a heck of a lot higher than it is now. And that's innovation and dedication on the town of municipal employees trying to do right by the taxpayers. The municipal tax rate history, we're in our ninth year of a stable municipal tax rate. You know, these numbers represent that. You have to remember, even though the number is trending down, our assessments have increased a couple of times and the tax rate has dropped proportionally. You can see 2017, 2019 are good examples of that. So again, this is that municipal tax rate history. You know, it's kind of misleading because municipal tax rate, the amount we've raised by taxes hasn't gone down, but the rate per thousand evaluation has gone down over the last eight years. So that stability of the municipal tax rate is really important. That's one of the primary measures of financial stability. It shows, you know, the limited budgetary impact over the last nine years. And our budget increases have been covered by the tax base and increased revenue. So one of the other really important measures of financial stability, and this Select Board talks about it a lot, which I think is tremendous. And I think we've prepared some really great documents covering the topic of unassigned fund balance. It can kind of be a confusing topic for folks to understand, which I think is one of the reasons it's most important to make sure we talk about it on a regular basis, make sure we have good documents explaining to the community what it is, what it's used for, and how they can learn more about it. So the unassigned fund balance chapter of the Budget Binder is filled with a variety of information. I encourage anybody looking for details to start there in their search for more information. So as far as stability is concerned, DRA recommends 8 to 17%. Barrington has stayed steady right around the midpoint. Currently, we're at 12.3%. So this unassigned fund balance in Barrington has been primarily used in recent years to fund capital projects, contributions to capital projects, and making investments in the community. So you can see over the last eight years where the balance has been and how much has been used at town meeting, funding those capital projects and investments in the community. So this graph is a little confusing at first, but I think it's a really valuable tool to demonstrate where our fund balance has been and how we've used it. So if you look at those green columns, those green bars are how much of the fund balance has been used at town meeting. So you see a spike in 2019 when about a million dollars was contributed toward the Town Hall project. The mustard yellow bar is the fund balance available. So you see that has continued to rise and peaked in 2017, 2018, where we're up at about 17, almost 18% of our regular general fund operating expenditures. Then we made that investment in the Town Hall, or the voters in Barrington did, brought that balance back down. And then that line, the orange line, is the percent of fund balance retained. And I think that's the most important line on this chart. So if you look, you know, where the line starts in 2013, that's almost 12 and a half percent. And that line has maintained at or above 12 and a half percent over the past eight years. And that's critically important for the financial stability of the town. And like I said, this Select Board has very carefully monitored the use of fund balance, making sure that we keep that at or above the targeted midpoint of 12 and a half percent. And this year's has been more critical than most to make sure that we retain that for cash flow purposes. So like I said, the fund balance, we use it primarily for capital projects, making responsible investments. The composition of fund balance is mostly unexpendited appropriations, which are taxes raised. So, you know, taxes we raised in 2020 through the operating budget and didn't spend revert into unassigned fund balance. And then additionally, revenue in excess of projections. And so in addition to funding for capital projects, this fund balance is a savings account to ensure cash flow in case of emergency. There are a number of communities across the state that, due to the economy, are not collecting property taxes at the rate that they typically do. And for those communities that don't have a substantial fund balance, they're forced to borrow money to ensure cash flow. December 17th, every community owes a check to the county for the county, the amount raised by the county for taxes. Though, or more frequently, depending on the arrangement with the schools, communities are required to pay the school the money raised by taxes towards their efforts. And if you don't have those funds available, you have to borrow to pay it. And so maintaining a healthy balance is critically important. And one side note with some additional information from today, which I sent out to the Select Board. Unlike some communities in the state, Barrington's property tax delinquency is at an all-time low, which I would love to do further analysis of and try to figure out, you know, what has contributed to that. But so right now, as of the end of 2020, December 31st, 2020, our property tax delinquency for the 2020 tax bills, the first and the second bill, is 3.4%, which compared to 2019, it was 4.6%. So as you know, this is something I've monitored closely throughout the process during the pandemic to try to understand how the pandemic and the economy is impacting residents in the Town of Barrington. And as far as paying the property tax bills, it really hasn't impacted the residents of Barrington and more are paying their taxes. Some folks speculate that it's the stimulus checks that folks are putting towards their property taxes. You have to also remember, the legislature, starting last year, reduced the interest rates on non-payment of property taxes. So the penalty for not paying your taxes has gone down and even still fewer folks are being delinquent on their taxes. So that's tremendous for the community of Barrington, doesn't dilute the need to have a healthy fund balance, but just interesting information. So moving on to the operating budget now. So you'll see that the proposed operating budget is $33,000 less than the current operating budget. And again, that captures a lot of required increases and still presents a budget less than what we're working with right now, which is the result of a tremendous amount of effort from all involved. It's about half a percent less than the budget we have right now. On the wage and benefit front, so this budget includes wage increases for employees, a step for eligible employees, which represents about 2 and a half percent. And on the benefit side, these are some of those mandatory increases. 12 and 12.6% of an increase in our health insurance premiums, which is a tremendous amount of money. 10% increase in New Hampshire retirement. It's a 20% total increase, but we'll experience that over two years, 21 and 22, because they're on a fiscal year calendar. So we won't experience those increases until July. But to think that we brought in, we were able to bring in a budget below what we're working with right now and include those increases is just tremendous. So I won't go in any level of detail into the budget, but I will just quickly hit those lines that are increase or decrease over $10,000. There are only a few. So admin contracts is one. It went up 22,000 this year. This was expected. We've worked with the Technology Committee to expand our investment in infrastructure. A lot of that has cyclical costs for online backups and licensing and things like that. So this was anticipated and thoughtfully decided. Revaluation contracts is up 18,000. As we've discussed, there's funding available to fund a partial statistical update. Our equalized ratio is at or below 90%, which means that our assessed values are about 10% less than what properties are selling for on average. And we need to make sure that we keep those close to market value to meet state requirements. Our general government building contracts line is up 17,000. This is really just a transfer from the custodial wages and benefits. And this is because the SAU 74 is under contract to handle the custodial services at the Public Safety Building after our employee retired earlier this year. Highway consultants is up 35,000. This is a consolidation of two lines. You'll see a line in the reduction category in a minute. But funds increase need for engineering work. The final two, highway maintenance contracts is up $10,000. We have a tremendous amount of tree work to do in the road right away. We're budgeting for that. And also 25,000 in the long-term bond and interest. We expect to borrow the money for the new Town Hall next year, or this year now, we're in January. And so we'll have an interest payment due this year and principal will start in 2022. Decreases, the incident fund is down $70,000 to reflect the current needs. The rental lease line is down 35,000. The Select Board renegotiated the Town Hall lease and we have reduced end of lease requirements. So that line was corrected. The vehicle fuel line is down $10,000 based on decreased utilization, but more importantly, decreased fuel prices. The highway layouts line, this was the line that was consolidated to cover that engineering work. Two more increases, and these are two that I'm extremely proud of on behalf of the road agent. Represents a tremendous amount of hard work by the road agent and the highway department with winter maintenance activities. So this reflects just 65,000 of a total of 75,000 reduced from the budget, including some overtime budgeted funds of reduced winter maintenance budget based on, you know, improved management of the outside contractors, improved management of the material utilization, and focusing on quality over quantity. And, you know, I think Mark, as road agent, like I said, he came in in August and managed last winter terrific and has done a great job so far this year. And so you see $33,000 reduced from the winter contractors line and 32,000 reduced from the highway salt and sand. So that's the operating budget moving in. In Barrington, the model has traditionally been to present the operating budget and warrant articles, mostly contributing to capital reserve accounts. These are the list of the recurring warrant articles voters encounter every year typically. You'll see the amount requested on the left and on the right column, you'll see the current balance. And so I'll leave this here for a moment, but remember, if you just click on that link down in the bottom of the slide, it'll take you to Chapter 22 of the Budget Binder, which has information and additional details of all of the warrant articles that have been requested through the process. So we have a few new warrant articles this year. All of these, the board has discussed, but for the community's benefit, I'll just touch on the bullet points. There's a $32,000 article for the purchase of an ultra-terrain vehicle for fire and rescue operations. This will improve the fire and police access to conservation lands. Important to note that the Town expects 16,000 of that total from the Firefighters Association, a generous donation. And so you'll see that article. There's a $25,000 article for a library and community center capital reserve. And this will go towards the design and construction of a new library and, you know, trying to reduce the total cost that the Town will be presented, the future bond request. There's additionally a $25,000 police equipment capital reserve. This is to save funds towards the replacement of costly police equipment. Additionally, this year is the, or in March of this year, the current police collective bargaining agreement expires. The Town negotiated a new contract, which the Select Board supported at the December 14th meeting. The voters in town will vote on the cost items of that newly negotiated contract. The full details are available with the materials of the December 14th meeting. Of specific note, and this information's included in the warrant article, there's a cost item of $4,787 in 2021, an additional 7,022, and an additional 2,023. And so I think the new three-year contract is a mutually beneficial agreement that the Union and Select Board have both supported. Finally, there are two veteran credit adjustments articles presented to voters this year. The first is a board-sponsored article, increasing the service connected total disability credit from 2,550 to 3,050. This is continuing with the incremental increase discussed by the Board in 2020 when the first increase was started. The next is a petition article. Ross Ascani is a gentleman who wrote to the Board over the summer, expressing his desire to increase the all-veterans credit to align with what the state allows communities to offer and what some surrounding communities offer. The petition warrant article calls to increase the credit from $450 to $750 over a three-year period. And I will note that later in the meeting, when we talk about that article specifically, there will be the need to discuss possible amendments based on the legality of having that phase in over a three-year period. It's, you know, nothing earth-shattering. I spoke to the petitioner today to make sure that he understood and get his feeling for what the intent of the article was. So we'll talk more about that, but that's the only petition article we have at this point. So that concludes my presentation. Again, all of the detailed information is available at the Budget Binder on the Town's website. You can also contact me directly with any questions you have. And Madam Chair, if you're interested, I'm happy to take questions from the Board or community if there are any.
I do see that select person air has his hand up. If you are a community member, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak, you have a few opportunities to do that. Before we move to select person air, I'll let the community members know that should you have a question, 664-0146 is the number that you could call if you're having trouble unmuting your phone. You can also mouse over your laptop or tablet and in the upper right-hand corner, you'll find a hand. If you click on that, it will alert us that you'd like to speak. Go ahead, select person air.
It's not my paperwork in front of me, and I can touch on it, but on the paved lines, warrant article from a capital reserve to the work of ABC and the Select Board that was brought up. Connor, you can say it better than me. Thank you.
Absolutely. So the Select Board made a commitment to fund an additional $175,000 in 2021 from the transportation fee capital reserve account. Those are funds which are already available. There's $5 of every registration, which goes automatically into this capital reserve account. And in lieu of having an additional warrant article or increasing the operating budget, the Select Board made a commitment to use $175,000 from that account towards paving. And so that will increase the total investment in paving in 2021 to $775,000.
Thank you. George, you have your hand up?
I removed my hand, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Is there any other questions, comments, or concerns in reference to this? Or will we be moving on to the building permit portion of the meeting?
Motion to move.
Very good.
So before we move to that, I'd like to go through each article and have the Board vote before we exit the public hearing.
Oh, very good. Go ahead.
Great. So starting with the operating budget, and I had a brief discussion with Mr. Secocia earlier. Obviously, the rest of the Select Board members understand. These votes will be the vote tally included on the warrant article going into deliberative session. If the majority of the Board votes to support the article, it will say the Select Board recommends this article and include the vote tally, whether it's five to zero, four to one, et cetera. If the Select Board votes not to support an article, the language will say the Select Board does not support this article by a vote and include the vote tally. So we can certainly, the Board can have any discussion they'd like about a warrant article. The only article that I will need to discuss when it comes up is the petition article, which is number 18. So if you'd like to just go through the articles, I can pull them up on the presentation as well. We can take votes on each of those.
Okay, roll call vote, please. We'll start with select person air. We'll move through alphabetically. And I will vote last. I'll take myself out of the alphabetic role and vote last. So do we have? Are you going to start with the actual operating budget?
Yes, sorry, I jumped in.
So I'm going to motion and assume that the article is recommended by the Select Board. Select person air, would you agree with that statement?
I want to clarify something. I want to clarify something. I'm not the governing body. The taxpayers is the governing body of this town, is my understanding. So it's up to the taxpayers to do their job and vote for what they want. It's not my job. I'm not paid for this. We present the materials, so it's up to them. If I support them or disapprove, it's our opinion, but it's up to the governing body, and that is the taxpayers. Thank you.
Couple of ones, select is the governing body.
So Select Person Air, would you recommend the operating budget?
As presented, yes.
Select Person Bailey?
I'm gonna withhold my comments. Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
And Hardakoff, aye. Article three. Beginning with Select Person Air, would you recommend the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve?
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Article five. Thank you all. Article four. Select Person Air, would you recommend the Highway Heavy Capital Equipment Reserve?
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Article five. Article five, Fire Truck Capital Reserve. Beginning with Select Person Air, would you recommend the Fire Truck Capital Reserve?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
And Hardakoff, aye. Thank you. Article five, Article six, my apologies. The Emergency Communications Upgrades Capital Reserve. Select Person Air, would you recommend the Emergency Communications Upgrades Capital Reserve?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
And Hardakoff, aye. Article seven, Purchase of a UTV for Fire and Rescue Operations. Select Person Air, would you recommend?
Bailey, aye.
NAP, nay.
Sakosh, aye.
Hardakoff, aye. Thank you. Article eight. Library and Community Capital Reserve. Select Person Air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Hardakoff, aye. Thank you all. Article nine, Our Police Equipment Capital Reserve. Beginning with Select Person Air.
Madam Chair, I, I, I had a mate.
I'm sorry, did we have an item eight?
It was the library.
That was the library.
Sorry.
That's okay. Article nine. Police capital, Police Equipment Capital Reserve. Beginning with Select Person Air, would you recommend the article?
Air, aye.
Madam Chair, I, I am going to approve that, but as I had said before, I think that should be more dollars on it. But going by what the board said, Bailey, aye, for the 25,000.
Thank you.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Article five. Dam Repair Engineering Replacement Capital Reserve. Beginning with Select Person Air, would you recommend this article?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Article five. Article 11 is our Fire and Rescue Equipment Capital Reserve. Beginning with Select Person Air, would you recommend this article?
Air, aye.
Again, Madam Chair, I think this should be more money, but going along with what the board found, Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Article five. Article 12, Our Cemetery Capital Reserve. Beginning with Select Person Air, would you recommend this article?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Article five. Article 13, Our Tricentennial Celebration Expendable Trust. Beginning with Select Person Air, would you recommend this article?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Article five. Article 14 of the Library Technology Capital Reserve. Beginning with Select Person Air, would you recommend this article?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Definitely.
Sakosh, aye.
Article five. Article 15 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement. I think we previously agreed on this, but we'll go through the exercise once again. Beginning with Select Person Air, would you recommend this article?
And, oh.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Article five. Thank you. Article 16, Collective Bargaining Agreement Renegotiation and Vote.
So if Article 15 fails, it would authorize the select board to call a special meeting for the cost items only.
Ah, it looked new to me. I thought, when have we read this? Okay. So beginning with Select Person Air, would you recommend that should Article 15 be defeated?
And, oh.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Article five. Article 17, Service Connected Total Disability Credit. Beginning with Select Person Air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Article five.
Okay, and so just real quick on this one. The language in the article as presented, and you see it on the screen, it's in all the materials, calls for a three-year phase-in of the increase. And that language comes straight from the statute. But our lawyer and the Department of Revenue Administration aren't clear if the three-year phase-in is able to be used to increase the credit, which is how it's being proposed here, or if it's only available to institute the all-veterans credit. And so we're still waiting on an answer from the legal counsel of the Department of Revenue Administration. But I think we need to have options available for deliberative session should the, depending on how the DRA provides an answer. So I spoke with the petitioner today and explained to him that it's, it might be possible that only one change would be able to be made this year, presumably either to 550 or 750. And he's only one petitioner, so he certainly doesn't have the authority to make this change. But he did say that he would support, if it could only be one, if we couldn't commit to the three-year phase-in, he would support just bringing it to 550 next year to match the intent of the article, which was 100 of each of three years. So it's possible that that will be the only option that the voters of deliberative session can decide on based on the, if the language is legal or not. So because this is a petitioned article, what I'd like to know from the board, regardless of what other amendment might be introduced regarding this article, is there any amendment that the select board wants to have prepared for this article at deliberative session to match the intent of the select board? Knowing that the, if there's an amendment necessary, the petitioner would support bringing it to 550.
So I'll begin, I would certainly support a phased-in response to this to our veterans here in town. So my response would be that based on each year, it should be brought forth to the residents of the town to allow the incremental increases. In other words, in one year, we can't make a decision of what the next year and the year after that should look like. So I would make a recommendation that the tax credit be moved from 450 to 550. And for full disclosure, I am a household that has a veteran within that household, and I would benefit from that $100 increase.
Thank you for transparency.
I also, Selectman Bailey speaking, I also am the household that will be increased by whatever is on there also from my prior service. But let, but let us not forget that whether you are the spouse or you are the veteran, both of them have suffered long and hard at different times when the individual was on active duty or whatever. So I appreciate every consideration on this article. And I do agree with moving it to 550 and then allowing it to go into deliberative session.
Any other response from the select board in reference to the $550?
I would support it going to 550.
I would support it too.
And I see a thumbs up from Select Person Air. I'll acknowledge that as your support as well. Thank you, sir. So I'm going to assume that our wording, because the select board is only allowed to present what are considered legal petitioned warrant articles, that we will leave this to our legal department to tell us what the verbiage needs to be. And I will ask, would the select board recommend this article?
Here, here.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
NAP, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
And Hardakoff, aye. Thank you all.
Terrific. Thank you. And then the 19th article will be other business pending additional petitioned articles. Thank you. That was tremendously efficient. I really appreciate the board's effort on that.
Okay, and I assume that portion of our public hearing is done, Connor, and we are going to be moving on to the issuance of a building permit?
Yes, I have no comments from the public, no hands raised, no comments in the comment section. So there still will be two public comment portions. We missed anybody, but yes, I think we are safe to move on.
Okay, and I will just say this to all of our department heads, to our town administrator, to our advisory budget committee, and certainly to this volunteer elected select board, a tremendous amount of work goes into this. It is one of the most impactful things that we all work on and do together. And so thank you all very much for the work that brought forward this operating budget. In reference to the-
I agree, Madam Chair, with your voice, and thank you very much for saying it that way.
In reference to the issuance of a building permit on Berry River Road, a private road for James, I'm gonna try this, Mar, Marvili, Marvilius? Sarah?
I'm sorry. Maravilius.
Maravilius and Sarah Bariato?
Badiato, sorry.
I'm close. Okay. So we have before us a building permit. It has a variety of reviews from department heads and planning board. It has been recommended that if the building permit is to be issued, that there be the requirement to take care to grade the property frontage away from the road to prevent water runoff being directed onto the road, that the, the building permit requister at a 15-inch culvert under the driveway near the home, that the person owning the property does not build upgrades within 10 feet of the side property boundaries, so that no new runoff is directed onto a budding properties. And that upon completion of construction, the road in front of the property would, would need to be graded to correct any rutting incidental to the construction. And that there is recommendation that the homeowner, landowner would join the local road association. Based on these recommendations from our various committees and employees, does the, the select board's being asked to consider authorizing the issuance of a building permit for map 104, lot 56, with the conditions indicated before that? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice Chair NAP, and I have a second from Select Person Air. Do we have any questions? Yeah, questions, comments, or concerns? Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much, and I, I have read over this, and I think it's, it's a wonderful request that they're making. But in the future, Madam Chair, I would ask that you consider on the article, I did with openness, I did speak to Masha about this today, and I did speak to Connor about this today. And it's concerning, the policy was amended on 5/8/2017. And I would just like to ask Chair to consider notifying individuals that are responsible for sending us notices on Article six, note, Article six, notice to be recorded, and Article seven, guarantee of future maintenance. I would appreciate that the next, at the next, not this one, but at the next program, they go back and reread that and see if maybe it might apply to the next one. And if so, turn around, note that in their letter. And I also will vote in favor of this private road.
Okay, so-
We just need to make sure a public hearing has an opportunity to comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Are there any people from the town of Barrington as registered voters that would like to speak on this before the select board moves to their roll call vote? You can mouse over your screen, and in the upper right-hand corner, you'll find a hand. You can click on that to alert our town administrator you'd like to speak. If for some reason you're having any issues with trying to speak, you could dial 664-0146. And if you would like to speak in your, pardon me, calling into the meeting as opposed to watching it virtually, you, I think it's star six to unmute yourself and speak. And that takes a moment for it to kick in once you star six. I do see one hand up from the public. Who's that, Connor?
I see Jack Gale.
Oh, go ahead, Jack. Please take a moment and speak.
My name is Jack Gale. I live at 798 Berry River Road. It's also lot 10455, a budding, the lot in question. I guess the question I would have is for anyone who, building there, the impact permit specifies a lot of land that has to be left untouched. I'm concerned how they're going to be able to build on this lot, given that it's surrounded by my property, a narrow road, and an access road to the beach that can't be blocked. And it contains two large rock mounds, one which can't really be disturbed as it's, it's within the Shorelands Water Quality Protection Act zone. And there is specifications in the impact permit about leaving areas untouched. I'm just concerned about the impact on the community while this construction goes on.
Do we have John Huckins here?
Yeah, she's right there.
Okay. John, did you feel after review of this that the property could be constructed and a certificate of occupancy be awarded based on the guidelines provided, still meeting what was just mentioned by the butter?
Yes, they did get their permit from DES to get their septic and the well put in. And they also have a permit from DES for the shoreline for the work they want to complete. And the house is able to meet all the setbacks that the town of Barrington has in their regulations.
Okay, I think the concern we heard was how to go about the building process while not disturbing. But I don't see anything in the recommendations that speak to that, just that grades not be affected.
I don't even understand what the question is that he asked. I'm not following the issue.
Okay, go, go ahead, Jack.
Requirement of the shoreline impact permit is about 3,100 square feet within the woodland buffer, be retained as natural woodlands in an unaltered state. So that, that's pretty much the back half of the house all the way to the pond. With the property surrounding this one not really eligible to, or construction vehicles or equipment, it leaves a very small area for which the crews to work in to be able to do, to put in the septic and the home. And if, if Mr. Huckins believes that that can be done on this lot, okay. I was concerned that-
I guess, the permission, talking about estate permits and those, they have to comply with those state permits. That's the state requirement. So it's not, they, they can't cut and do the stuff in that area that the state didn't give permission to do any work in on that shoreline, that their stuff, if that's where the concern is.
So the state oversees that, correct, John?
Correct. Anything within 250 feet of the water, they actually do a drawing and give it to the state and show exactly what the existing conditions are, what they're going to change and how they're going to change them. And they also have to show whether they're going to have like erosion control and everything all in place. During construction, I do verify a couple of times during construction that their erosion control is in place and maintained. Especially springtime, sometimes when you start to get that melting and the runoff, their erosion control sometimes needs maintenance. Usually that's when I see an issue more so than the summers when it's dry.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you for speaking to that, John. Jack, did you have anything else that you wanted to bring up in the public hearing?
I do not.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak during this portion of the public hearing?
Just see Dan Air's hand.
Okay, go ahead, Select Person Air.
Um, is my hand raised?
It was, but it went down.
Your physical hand was raised, and I have you pinned, so I could see it. Go ahead.
No, the information provided, there's a lot of information, more than normal and stuff. So they dotted their eyes. So there is, what was going in there? There's a scope of work area they can work in, so they have to maintain that. And then too, with matting, putting out matting is up, you don't disturb other areas. I think that's why they may give you so, so much information. So I just feel there's more information provided than normal.
Okay.
Because of the conditions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
I see none.
Okay, seeing as none, uh, we'll move forward with the, um, original motion by Vice Chair Knapp and a second by select person Air, beginning with select person Air. Roll call vote, please.
Air aye.
Bailey aye.
Andy, you're muted.
I did it to myself. I said Knapp aye, sorry.
Okay, and Hardikoff aye, motion carries. Thank you. We have an appointment for the budget and warrant finalization.
All done.
I was gonna say, why is this section three? I feel like we're really efficient. Review of meeting minutes, please. I had had, uh, one group of meeting minutes that, that had an error and was corrected. There is, let's begin with one motion at a time. Would someone make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the 12/7/2020 meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, select person Sakoshia, and I have a second by, by select person Bailey. Could I have a roll call vote, beginning with, um, select person Air?
Air aye.
Bailey aye.
Knapp aye.
Hardikoff aye, thank you. I was absent from the 14th, correct?
Yes.
Yep, that's it. So I'm gonna recuse myself from the next, um, would someone like to make a motion, though, to accept the December 14th of 2020? I have a motion by select person Bailey. Do I have a second? I have a second by select person Sakoshia. Could I have a roll call vote, beginning with select person Air, and I will recuse myself?
Air aye.
Bailey aye.
Knapp aye.
Sakoshia.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up is the meeting minutes for 12/28 of 2020, our very fast and furious 15-minute meeting. Could I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from that meeting? I have a motion by select person Bailey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Vice Chair Knapp, thank you. Roll call vote, beginning with select person Air.
Air aye.
Bailey aye.
Knapp aye.
Sakoshia.
Sakoshia may be abstain. You weren't at that meeting.
Oh yeah, you were absent, yep. And I will accept it, so, uh, the motion will carry. Under old business, are these public hearings we're holding for the, um, sale of map 22-1?
No, so these are gonna be the vote, um, but there is a public comment period, a right, not a public hearing, public comment, but just the regular agenda, public comment, um, which we skipped over before review minutes.
Yeah, did I miss that in the agenda, or was it not typed in there?
It was on the agenda, after appointments, before review minutes. On page one.
I'm on page three of the agenda, and I don't see it there, but-
I think you're on the town administrator report.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, well, my apologies, that's what I'm using. I don't think, I don't know if I have the copy of the agenda, to be honest. Okay, moving on, thank you. Um, under old business is-
That public comment, Tracy?
Yeah, that, so, public comment is up to 15 minutes, three minutes per person. Should you want to speak, you can mouse over your screen. It will, um, bring up some upper right-hand corner commands. You'll see a hand. You can click on the hand if you'd like to speak. If you are on a phone and you would like to speak, you can unmute yourself by pressing, I'll say it again, star six, I got that right? Star six, wait one moment, though. It takes just a minute for that to actually allow you to speak. And if, if, um, you're really having issues getting through to us and letting us know you'd like to speak, you can call 664-0146. I'll give it about 30 seconds.
See a hand raised from a Don Bueker.
Yep, go ahead, Don, three minutes.
Hi, um, thank you all for everything that you do. I just had a question, and maybe I missed it and get the information. But I know that, that transfer station hours were changed, and today you're gonna be talking about a, a contractor policy. I was wondering if there is a document somewhere that talks about the other, that the results of the entire survey, and if there are any other actions taken on the other activities. What I'm specifically interested in is about yard waste.
Aaron, are you on here? So typically, Don, I'll just fill you in, we typically don't have question and answer, question and answer session during public comment. But I think what you're raising is a really important question. And Aaron, if you could take less than three minutes and respond to the transfer station committee work and what's been accomplished this past year?
In, like, in general, as a whole?
Yep, and, and the targets, and, and then it sounded like yard waste was something that was important to Dawn. So if we have not covered that yet in the transfer station committee, if you could just perhaps give insight as to when that may come up, if it's going to come up for the transfer station committee?
So it did come up when we did our survey. So we've gone through a number of steps to find out what, um, services the residents of Barrington would like to see. And one of the questions was, um, yard waste, um, having a disposal site. We did apparently have that in years past, um, and we were not able to, um, really maintain a strip pile that didn't have contaminants. So it has kind of not really come to light. It was asked, but there wasn't enough, um, feedback from the residents that there was something that they could, that we would provide for them. It would cost the town too much at this point, you know, that, nobody wants us to burn, and then it would be chipping, and, um, you know, it's just a whole big thing.
Um, sorry to cut you off here, there's, there's something up with your microphone. And so I think folks can catch the gist, but I think it was kind of trailing off in the end. So I'm just gonna jump in and, and just quick, give a quick bullet point of what you were saying. So the, the total results of our survey are available. Right now, the only places they're available are in the transfer station minutes. But if you'd like to send an email to the town, Mr. Bueker, we can send you those minutes which have the results. Specific to the yard waste, um, something that I found interesting was less than a majority of the respondents supported adding a yard waste collection facility at the transfer station, uh, which was surprising to me, because I, that's something that I've heard a lot as town administrator, folks looking for that at the transfer station. But not only was it not supported, but it was supported by less than a majority of folks. To Tracy's point about the work of the transfer station committee, this committee of community volunteers, all of the minutes are available on the town's website, have recommended an entirely updated fee structure for the transfer station, making it more transparent, uh, for community members and easier for, uh, employees of the transfer station, uh, to make adjustments. They've also worked on, uh, updated hours, uh, as you mentioned, Mr. Bueker. Additionally, the, uh, in a kind of a bigger picture approach, the committee has looked into recycling, the increased costs of recycling, um, that have a direct cost to the town, so much so that some communities have eliminated their recycling altogether. Barrington has remained committed to doing what we can for recycling, um, and minimizing the costs by having well-educated, uh, residents dispose of, dispose of the recyclables in responsible ways. Additionally, the Transfer Station Recycling Center Review Committee has, uh, looked at the, um, finances of the, uh, department, um, the revenue and the costs to try to balance what the goals are. They do have a number of items, um, to work on upcoming, um, including some of the other items that were asked about during the survey. And also, um, the finalizing, um, the policy, as you referenced later in the agenda. They're presenting a, a contractor hauler form, um, and updated rules of procedures to codify most of the work that's already done. So the, the group has, um, done a tremendous amount of work so far, uh, making recommendations to the select board. They'll certainly be working more. Those meetings are public meetings. Um, you're welcome to join in if you have a specific interest or want to bring something to their attention, uh, but certainly appreciate your interest in the group and their work.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, do we have any other public comment, uh, select person Air?
Yes, Daniel Air, 334, Daniel Air. And plus, I'm a member of the Conservation Committee. But I don't understand that answer, because all these conservation subdivision, the TIDA, there is, and then in the future, there's a push for, uh, the recycle compost materials and stuff in Massachusetts, and stuff, you know, separated as a recycling. So in the future, it's coming, I believe. And you can, we have private, high-profile people do that, but I think it would be a benefit at some point. I'm surprised I wasn't just discussing more detail, having, uh, yard waste available.
So I would, I would also, we were given a priority on the transfer station committee of various things that were to be accomplished and which were to become prioritization for the group. I will tell you that there's an extremely knowledgeable body of people volunteering on the transfer station, um, committee. And it certainly, I think, allows opportunity for people to contribute other, um, areas of information, other areas of review that they would like to see. But I do feel like the transfer station committee was given some very lofty goals that they've met in a very short period of time in order to, um, address some major issues that needed to be looked at. So I would say the same thing, select person Air, bring that forward, um, to the, uh, transfer station committee and, um, ask for review of, of that material. My screen is freezing. Uh, TA MacGyver, are we having technical difficulties?
Uh, not on my end.
Okay, every now and then-
I didn't see you freeze.
Okay, every now and then my screen is freezing. So, okay, moving on, um, any other public, uh, comments?
I see none, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to old business, sale of map 22-1. Select board's being asked to consider selling map 22-1 Pumpkin Hollow Park for $12,265.04, which represents the full amount of taxes, interest, and penalties owed to the town. The new owner must accept this property with the tenant in place. Questions, comments, concerns from the select board? And if there are none, I would also accept a motion to, um, sell the property at map 22-1.
I'll make a motion, second.
Okay, roll call vote, beginning with select person Air.
Air aye.
Bailey aye.
Knapp aye.
Sakoshia.
And Hardikoff aye. Thank you all for that. Um, under the next portion of the meeting, can I ask Vice Chair to take over? And I will recuse myself from any of the old business pertaining to this map 262-14-9.
Yep, uh, open the final, this, uh, final public hearing?
No, this is a vote. Two public hearings are done, just a vote.
I wasn't sure if we had to do a public hearing before the vote.
No.
No. Okay, so I will, um, George, you have something before I begin?
Oh no, I was just getting ready for your motion. I'm gonna make a motion.
So, um, I am looking for a motion for the sale of map 262-14-9.
So moved.
For the first from George, Jim actually had his hand up first for the second, so I've got a first from Mr. Bailey and a second from Mr. Sakoshia. Roll call vote.
Air aye.
Bailey aye.
Knapp aye.
Sakoshia.
All right, um, and I will turn it back over to Tracy at that point.
Um, deliberative session preparation, Connor, would you like to fill us in on this?
Yeah, so really nothing new to add. We're instituting the recommendations, uh, the requirements set by the select board for an in-person deliberative session. We're, you know, getting the word out to folks in the community that the deliberative session will be in person on January 30th, uh, at the middle school. Uh, we will have social distancing in place. One of the things that we're focusing on this year is improved audio and visual. So we'll have, uh, more speakers, better microphones, we'll have displays, multiple displays set up. So especially with folks spread out, they're able to see. Um, we're also working to make sure that we can livestream the event. Now, this won't allow for remote participation. Um, this will only be a, a one-way feed of what's happening during the meeting. Um, and it'll also be recorded as it has been in years past. But the, uh, that, we're hoping that that improved audio and visual will, uh, make the, uh, event smooth for those who do attend. Certainly don't expect, um, anywhere near average or above average participation. Uh, there's no big items on the warrant, um, but we want to be prepared for whatever we do encounter, uh, to make sure that we meet state requirements. I will say that the legislature is, is trying to push through a couple of really last-minute bills, bypassing committees, um, which may, um, which may change some of the rules allowing for better remote participation. Most of what I've seen hasn't been for SB2 communities, it's just been for postponing meetings. But I'll keep you posted if anything happens on that. I don't expect anything. So, uh, note to select board members, uh, to attend if they're able to. I know Bailey had previously mentioned, um, he didn't think he was going to be available. And the last thing that I wanted to mention was, um, at the January 25th meeting, um, I will have prepared, as I did last year, um, an assignment for those who are going to be attending of which articles they will be introducing. Um, so I'll provide the information for you, just a brief snippet, um, about the article. Allow you to present it, uh, to the group at deliberative session, uh, prior to discussion, deliberation, and any votes. So happy to answer any questions. Let's see if you hands up.
Uh, select person Bailey, your hand was up first.
Yes, I did my, uh, with, with Chair's approval, asked Connor about, uh, the inoculations. Has anything been done with the inoculations for COVID to, uh, allow the, uh, select board to, uh, step ahead of the line and get the, this inoculation so they can participate in the political, uh, agenda?
Um, I'm aware of no efforts, uh, that would make the vaccine available to select board members ahead of time.
Just asking, thank you.
Select, uh, select person Air, I think your hand was up next.
Um, yes, are we gonna have heat this year in the, uh, gym?
Depends on how long you want deliberative session.
Bring your own clothes.
So one, the, the, um, we will try to make sure that the deliberative session is appropriately climate-controlled. We'll note, one of the requirements set by the select board is in increased ventilation. Um, I believe that will be able to be accomplished with, um, running the HVAC units on constant, using the ionization system that exists. And so, uh, I certainly intend, uh, to work with the facility manager to make every effort to have the room be comfortable.
Wear your winter gear and bring your hot cocoa in your mug. Go ahead, Vice Chair Knapp.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the room's gonna be climate cold, not climate-controlled, and, uh-
True facility guy.
Yeah, I'm like, uh, so wear your, your warm shoes, because your feet will get cold fast. And then Connor, um, just something that stood out to me, but I think is worth communicating on, with deliberative session is the note on it. It would be worth putting the date in here, because I believe it's the first weekend in February, that first Saturday in February, correct?
The date's in there, it's January 30th, Saturday's January 30th.
Oh, the 30th. And, am I just missing it?
It's in the first sentence under deliberative session preparation in my report.
No, I'm talking about on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see.
Just referencing it on the agenda, because not everybody sees the TA report.
Yeah.
For some reason, I had the first weekend in February.
This week, quite frankly, I didn't even recognize it was the agenda, so what does that tell you?
Uh, okay, point taken, thanks, Andy.
Okay, so, um, thank you all. Moving on to the Swains Lake Drawdown Plan. The plan has been finalized. Connor, do you want to speak to this?
Uh, nothing major to add. Um, the last place the select board left off is, uh, we were waiting for comment by, uh, the Lake Association, Fish and Game, the Department of Environmental Services, um, those minor comments were incorporated, uh, did not substantially change the, um, drawdown plan as presented. Um, the biggest changes were just to the contact list, um, on page T2 of two. Um, and so, uh, this would be a great document, appreciate the board's support in commissioning it.
Very good. Moving on to new business, um, the Community Development Block Grant Application Award. So, um, I think we're getting more familiar with CDBG funding. And, um, in our particular case, I think our ability to apply comes through Stratford County, is that correct, TA MacGyver?
No, no, we, we have our own authority as municipality.
And we don't have to piggyback with Stratford County?
No.
Okay, so the town is being asked to consider awarding Donna Lane the CDBG application writing scope. If any of you have ever written a CDBG grant, it's riveting, and the, um, luminous amount of information that must be provided is quite interesting. And Donna Lane has a lot of experience with this, so I personally would feel very comfortable awarding the application writing scope to this individual.
Second. Second.
Uh, so I'd make a motion, uh, in a second. And could we have, uh, a roll call vote unless there's comment in reference to this? By the way, she's one of the few seasoned professionals able to, um, comfortably do this work.
There's a public member trying to get on.
It's not public comment, Dan.
Go ahead. Select person air, we've got a motion and we have a second.
Yeah, I, on my screen, I see Dawn.
I, I understand. It's not public comment right now. We have a roll call vote beginning with you.
All right, air eyes.
George, can you unmute yourself?
It's been a bad meeting for all of us. Bailey eye.
Nap eye.
Skosh eye.
Articoff eye, the motion will carry and I will make sure that we have one more public comment session towards the end of the meeting. Onto the transfer station contractor policy review. Uh, first of all, hats off to the, if you saw the traffic that went back and forth on this, hats off to the members of the transfer station committee for using a very short window of time to get a, a comprehensive, um, group of rules together as well as, uh, the policy and the forms. So there's draft material available to you. And you're being asked to accept the recommendations from the transfer station and recycling committee uh, with the changes to the contractor form and the rules. And I think that was, Erin, did you want to speak to this real quick? I don't wanna, um, you've done a lot of work on this.
Yep, um, so at one of the, and I, sorry Connor, I don't remember the date, but we went to the board, uh, this all stemmed from the, us looking for the reversal from the 2008 minutes um, that the select board at the time voted to not accept contractor waste. And we were asked to come back with something, um, you know, so we can ensure that the waste that we are receiving from said contractors is in fact coming from Barrington. So we came up with a contractor and holler form that, um, we really just looked at Hampton from, to, you know, where recreate the wheel when we got somebody else who helped us, um, just go through. So, you know, it's, it's basic stuff, you know, we'll ask for the property owner, the address where the material is coming from, contractor information. And, um, we know that all jobs don't require a building permit, but if there is one that does require, we are asking for a copy of this. Um, our implementation is looking at if this goes through at the beginning of February. And what I will do is mail out a letter and the form itself to the contractors that we've been keeping track of right now that are in town. Um, and then we'll have them available, um, just so we can get the word out. I know it'll be a little bit tricky at first, but, um, we are hoping that this will help alleviate some of the questioning of materials coming in.
Right now, 12:14 today, the select board was sent the final example of the transfer station, um, and recycling committee notes and the contractor holler form and the, um, uh, additional information on the highway building application. So if you did not get a chance to review that, um, I need to know before any motions come forward. Okay, select person Bailey, you had your hand up first.
Yes, madam chair, thank you very much. I have several questions after I reviewed this this afternoon. And, uh, is this form, uh, required for every dump? So I mean, if they bring in one load and they dump it, so the next load, is, is this going to do for, uh, my next question would be, what's the limits on this form? So if they fill it out once and they bring one load and then they turn around and go to bring it, is a second load allowed for it?
Same days, what George is trying to say.
Karen?
It would, so contractor form authorizes one day of admittance to the transfer station. We haven't really had, um, multiple trips from contractors. They usually do it in one fell swoop if they either have a trailer or they have their truck loaded. Um, I can check with Dan if you guys wanna, um, know really how many people do re, make return trips in one day. But, um, you know, obviously we can note on there that if they're going to be making two trips in a day, but it doesn't typically happen. But I would, you know, definitely if this is an ongoing project, maybe we can note on there that, you know, hey, this is what's to be expected. I mean, you can kind of gauge how much, you know, things are gonna be with some of your projects.
Well, the, the reason I ask that question is I don't want somebody coming here and combining two projects into one because I've had work done here in the morning and then they've, uh, gone off to do another project in the afternoon. Not this year, but years before. And, uh, so that's why I asked the question. I mean, do they have the form for every, i- is it required? It's not what was done in the past, Erin. It's what you're gonna be required after February. You're gonna have them have one for every load or writ? And then, and then for the, uh, no building permit, what are they gonna fill this out too and just put no building permit and submit it?
Every contractor will be required to fill it out. If they can provide a building permit, we'd ask for a copy of that. I know some of the smaller projects don't require that form. So I think having the property owner's name and the address and stuff and the description of the materials will be able to, you know, know what kind of project it is and if it's only a, a small one.
Erin, I want to thank you very much. I know I asked some quick questions and I, I like the fact that you are prepared for them and thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to ask.
Okay, um, select person air?
Well, I made an observation. I know what Erin did, but the audio is perfect for me.
Okay, very good. Um, so you're being asked to accept the, um, transfer, sorry, I'm losing the material, uh, the transfer station outline.
Contract's policy.
And the con, no, well, not just that, but you were also being asked the center rules and regulations. So you're being asked to review and accept the transfer station rules and regulations with the updates to the contractor policy. And you're being asked to accept the contractor form as it's been presented. So do I have a motion? I.
Jim made that motion.
Okay, so I have a motion from select person Sakosha. Do I have a second?
Bailey seconds.
I have a second from select person Bailey. Could I have a roll call vote beginning with select person air?
Air eyes.
Bailey eye.
Nap eye.
Skosh eye.
Articoff eye. Thank you again to the transfer station committee. Lots of work has gone into this.
Um, now, can I, can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Because I know this kind of hinged on what you guys were gonna do because I still need you guys to look at reversing the vote that was done in 2008.
Yes, yep, very good. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
I think we reversed that pending this, but it was about in 2008, no longer allowing contractors that resided, worked and paid taxes in this town to utilize the transfer station for this type of, uh, disposal. And we're asking for the select board to reverse the 2008 select board decision that was made limiting that accessibility for taxpayers. Could I have that in a motion, please?
Yeah, as stated.
Okay, and could I have a second on that?
Skosh a second.
Okay, and could I have a roll call vote beginning with select person air?
Air eyes.
I don't think we need this vote, but Bailey eye.
Nap eye.
Skosh eye.
Articoff eye. Thank you all.
And the reason I said that, Madam Chair, was that we just voted to approve the new, the new rules. And so that should, you know, be a, a revision to what came up. Thank you.
Absolutely, sir. I, I would agree with you. I, I think it was simply to make it easier for the employees when they're faced with any type of change like that, to have it stated in the meeting minutes.
I understand. Thank you.
Yes, we have a deputy treasurer appointment.
Uh, so as we've previously discussed, the town treasurer has been working with the municipal office administrator to train her with the essential duties of the town treasurer. Uh, this was supported by the select board by including the ability to serve as deputy treasurer as in the municipal office administrator's job description. Um, additionally, this model has been reviewed without objection by the town's auditor and the town's attorney. Uh, pursuant to RSA 41 colon 29 dash A, Peter Royce, as the town treasurer, has recommended Tiffany Cottle to be appointed as deputy treasurer. So the select board is asked to approve, to consider approving the appointment of Tiffany Cottle as deputy treasurer.
Do I have a motion approving the appointment of Tiffany Cottle as deputy treasurer?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second to that motion? I have a second by select person Bailey. May I have a roll call vote beginning with select person air?
Air eyes.
Bailey eye.
Nap eye.
Skosh eye.
Articoff eye. Thank you very much.
And chairperson Hardikoff, the one thing, um, that I sent out that, uh, was available today, um, I wanted to see if the board would consider reviewing it, um, just minor, so we don't have to wait until the 25th. Um, the selected contractor for the Highway Department, um, Office Edition finalized the building permit application. It was reviewed by the building inspector for code compliance. Um, I sent a copy to the select board. Uh, the select board would need to take an action as the owner, uh, to approve the building permit application as presented. Um, there's a hand drawn sketch, um, which varies slightly from the, um, visuals the select board was presented previously. It addresses the concerns of an exit door into the lobby, um, from the front office. Um, and the rest of the details remain, uh, quite the same. So if the board is willing, I would ask that you consider, um, making a decision on the building permit application as presented.
So moved.
Okay, and do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second from select person Sakosha. Questions, comments, concerns in reference to the highway building permit? Okay, seeing as none, roll call vote beginning with select person air?
Air eyes.
Bailey eye.
Nap eye.
Skosh eye.
Articoff eye, the motion carries. Thank you all. Um, before we move on to the select persons reports and concerns, Connor, did you want to speak to January work anniversaries?
Yeah, so we skipped, um, admin, the, um, administrator's report. I know, uh, municipal office administrator Cottle has, um, a couple of things to mention as well. So yes, the only thing that, um, I have that wasn't on the agenda is the January work anniversaries. As here we are, the first meeting in January. I'm very glad to recognize and point out, uh, four work anniversaries this month. Tyler Rand in the fire department, uh, celebrating 12 years with the town of Barrington. Cody Guile is at four years with the town of Barrington. Amy Doherty, our very own finance administrator, uh, is two years now with the town of Barrington. Erin O'Day, the recreation administrative assistant, uh, is celebrating her first year work anniversary. Uh, thank you very much to them and thank you for the time to recognize them and municipal office administrator Cottle.
For your review and signature, we have that big pile of minutes that were approved in the, uh, previously in this meeting, including the, um, 11:30 minutes that we're going to have you re-sign after the correction. Uh, we also have all of the state forms associated with the budget and warrant finalization and the private road agreement for map 104 lot 56 will be sent to chairperson Hardikoff for signature. That's it.
Thank you very much. Um, up next are your select person reports. Um, select person air?
All right, I missed the, um, conservation meeting. And then there was a town lands committee that had problems with Zoom, they canceled it, so I attended the auction instead.
Okay, select person Bailey?
I just have to report that, uh, the library is, uh, moving forward. Uh, the staff there is really working hard to, uh, fulfill, uh, the needs of the town and what have you. And they have, uh, seen they've overcome, uh, some of the, uh, minor stuff with it. Other than that, there's nothing else to report.
Okay, vice chair now.
Um, planning board meeting is tomorrow and technology committee meeting is, uh, Wednesday, next, next Tuesday.
Very good. And select person Sakosha?
Um, right now, the rec department, they're trying to plan, uh, they're kind of in a tough spot with COVID, not knowing what the future holds. But, um, they're in this process for planning for some of the UPS right now. And it's gonna be COVID safe, we'll have a couple of options. Um, youth basketball starts next week and they're also getting going on some of the, uh, the adult activities that they do over there.
Okay, very good. Um, so I did not make it to the transfer station committee meeting last week, but they did an excellent job back and forth with their email traffic, reviewing and updating forms and making the recommendations, um, to changes to those forms, as you saw presented tonight. And then the advisory budget committee will be meeting tomorrow. I received a meeting link in reference to that. They'll also be voting and making recommendations on each of the articles. Um, thank you. Up next is public comment. Uh, public comment is 15 minutes, three minutes per person. I apologize for not recognizing a member of the public earlier, but, um, certainly if you would like to speak at this time, uh, please go right ahead, raise your hand. You can mouse over the screen and in the upper right-hand corner, click on the hand icon and it will alert us that you'd like to speak. You can dial 6640146. You can, uh, write to administration at barrington.nuhamshire.gov, I think. Have I got that right, folks? And, uh, and a lot, and alert TA McGyver that you'd like to speak. And if you are attending tonight by phone, you can press star six, pause for a moment and then speak and it will unmute you and alert us that you'd like to participate verbally in our meeting over the phone.
There was a member of the community who, uh, sent a text chat in earlier, um, wondering what the parcel number was of the second property sold. Um, he found that information on the report and he's off there.
Oh, very good. Okay, so, um,
Melissa H.
I'm sorry, say it again?
I see a hand up from Melissa H, maybe our very own library director.
Go ahead, Melissa, three minutes.
Hi, this is Melissa Hewitt from the Barrington Public Library. I wanted to hop on real quick and just remind everyone, both select board and any community members that were listening, that, um, starting this month, the trustees, um, monthly meeting has been switched and is now going to be the second Tuesday of every month from 6:30 to 8:00 PM-ish through Zoom. And that if anybody from the public wanted to attend the meetings, um, the Zoom meeting information is on our calendar um, at the barringtonlibrary.com/events ASP, um, if people need the link. Um, but I just wanted to give out that reminder since that was going into effect for our first January meeting.
Hold on, thank you, uh, very much, Melissa. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, um, I just need to ask, and I cringe to think, do we need a non-public, folks?
I do not.
I do. Personnel reputation.
Yeah, a motion to enter non-public for purpose of personnel and reputation.
Tracy, I just had a quick comment if I could speak.
Yes, go right ahead.
Sorry, it's Erin. Um, I just wanted to let everybody know that, um, on Saturday, we'll be rolling out our new transfer station stickers. Um, I'm also, um, I've created a form that I'm gonna have on the website as a link that people can fill out the form and then send over a self-addressed stamped envelope so I can mail out your transfer station stickers. That way to try to eliminate some of the backup that will happen at the transfer station and thus trying to get everybody to socially distance. So if anybody, you know, needs them, can absolutely contact me, but we are going to be starting that and we are asking residents to place them on their passenger side windshield on the lower right-hand side. Um, they do have to be displayed on the vehicles. And you are limited to two per household. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
I, Tracy, I have a comment on the, on the whole transfer station sticker thing.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have any issue having a transfer station sticker. I do have an issue putting it in on my windshield because in various states that I drive, registrations are applied in different areas. State, stickers do not belong on the windshield of a vehicle. They belong on side windows, rear windows, places like that. I also have multiple residences that require transfer station stickers. So I look like I got years of beach passes stuck on my car because of these transfer station stickers. But I will not be putting a transfer station on my windshield, so I want to make that very clear, not only to the board, but also to the transfer station.
So, um, Erin, would it be possible for, I don't know what the size of the sticker is, but would it be possible for us that have, um, what are they called?
Iron vehicles.
No, easy passes? To place them on the back of our easy pass so we don't even see them?
Uh, we looked at several different vehicles and we didn't want to hinder the view because we looked at behind the mirrors and whatnot. And, and we wanted a central location, meaning one location, so each attendant can look at that windshield and say, all right, they have a transfer station. have a transfer station sticker and, you know, they're a resident of Barrington. Um, I, we looked at multiple different options and we've already kind of asked people to start placing them there. Um, and keep going back and forth.
Well, why don't, why don't we allow Vice Chair Knapp to keep them all on a piece of paper and he can slide out the paper and put it in the right-hand side when he's driving through the Barrington transfer station?
Andy could also buy another car just so he could go to dump. I mean, you might as well put some of that money back in circulation.
Okay, you guys. Go ahead, Select Person Air.
Um, I like your comment. So you put on a piece of paper and just put it in that cor, right-hand corner wherever they want it?
Why, why not?
I, I like that. It doesn't have to be attached to the vehicle.
I understand, yes. I, we, we have many stickers coming and going from the Air Force Base that required us to place them on our windshield as well. I get it, Andy. I get it. I hear you. I'm sure we'll work it out. Okay, so, uh, we have a motion by Select Person Air to enter non-public for purpose of personnel and reputation. Do I have a second on that? I will ask again. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I will meet you all over in non-public for
I need to mail the link right now.
Thank you, sir.
See ya.
We'll be coming out of non-public when we are done and report.
Are we coming back here?
Yes, always.
Boom, boom. George.
Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we have a quorum.
Very good. Uh, report out, please, before closing the public meeting.
Uh, the Select Board discussed communication, um, policies in the rules and procedures for the Select Board and appropriate communications between staff and the Select Board, and we're satisfied with the outcome. There's no need to seal the non-public minutes.
Very good. Thank you all. And, um, when is our next meeting, TA MacGyver?
Uh, right now, our next meeting is January 25th. If between now and January 12th, we receive a petition warrant article which includes any financial impact to the town, any appropriation, we will have a second public hearing on January 18th.
Very good. Thank you all very much and, uh, we'll see you on the 25th.
Motion and vote to adjourn.
Uh, I would, I would, okay, I'll make the second and roll call vote beginning with Select Person Air.
He gone.
Select Person Bailey?
He gone.
Okay, I'll move to Vice Chair Knapp. Motion to adjourn, sir.
Aye.
Sakosha.
And Harkoff aye. Thank God there's a quorum. Have a good night, all.
Same.